Okay, I've got seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone for coming out. First couple of ground rules. This meeting is being recorded. So please silence all your cell phones and any background noise. If you're not speaking, please keep yourself muted. It's that microphone icon at the bottom of the screen on the left. There'll be a time for questions and comments for each project after the planning commission members have a chance to review it. I'll open the floor for question and comments at that time. If you are to make a comment, please state your name and address for the record, and your time will be two and a half minutes. There'll also be a time for public comment at the end of the meeting. So that being said, our first order of business is approval of the February 14th minutes. We have any discussion on that, any changes, discrepancies?
Chris, would you like to take role first?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, John. Yes. I'll take a quick roll call. I'll start with planning commission members. Alex Almery here.
I am here.
Tim Ruth.
Present.
Andy.
Present.
And John.
Here.
Tony Bohnner, alternate, are you onboard?
Yes, present.
Okay, I see we have Supervisor Collingwood onboard. Who do we have here with Triple Net?
Chris, good evening. I'm Ed Murphy here on behalf of Triple Net. We also have Justin Genati, our project engineer president as well.
And that's it for your group?
I think those are the, Justin and I principally will be the spokespeople. We have others that are monitoring, but probably won't be that active.
Okay, if they are active, please identify.
Sure.
And then how about Veris? Who do we have with Veris?
Ryan Hahn and Bob McCormick with Veris Partners, and we have our engineers Matt Chartran and Adam Sitrulo from Buller Engineering, and Greg Davis from Saw Yearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else want to identify themselves for the meeting record? All right, hearing none. Let's get back to the approval of the February 14th minutes.
This is Alex. I motion we approve the minutes as written.
I got a second?
Andy, I will second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so Triple Net, you're first on the agenda. One of you guys take the floor? Ed, you're muted.
Muted. I started to say that we were here exactly a month ago on February 14th, and we had covered in detail the various consultant review letters associated with the project. At the conclusion of that discussion a month ago, it was agreed that we would defer any recommendation from the planning commission pending our follow-up on a handful of issues that were discussed during the meeting on the 14th. Those follow-ups included trying to finalize the route of the pedestrian trail, the walking trail. Secondly, supplementing the buffers along Lutheran Village Common Boundary Line as well as the northern and western boundary lines, preparing 3D elevation of what those views would look like to the north and the east, I guess, from our site, and to determine if any other partial waivers or full waivers would be needed, recognizing we were going to try to maximize onsite plantings to try to address the afforestation requirements of the ordinance. So what's happened in the interim, and I'll shortly defer to Justin Genati, our engineer, is that we've done all of those things that I just summarized, and we also did meet last week with a larger group at Lutheran Village to talk about those issues that were important to them and which we touched on with representatives of Lutheran Village on February 14th as well. So I think what we can do now is have Justin run through the deliverables that we agreed to provide at the last month's meeting and then pick up the conversation after that. Justin, do you want to either share Greg's screen or however you want to do it, walk through the different additional plans and elevations and things like that that you've generated in the last month?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Greg, am I able to share a screen? Is it my active here?
Yes, you can share the screen now.
All right, is everyone able to see my screen on the, on the meeting?
Yep.
All right, good evening again, everyone. Justin Geni with Dynamic Engineering. So as Ed already alluded to, we, the conclusion of the last meeting, we had a couple of deliverables which we went back and got to the drawing board, circulated them amongst township staff, and also met with the Lutheran community. I'm just gonna walk through pretty quickly what those requests were and how we addressed them and where we stand tonight. So first on your screen is just an aerial overlay of the project, the same aerial overlay that we showed last week, last month. Same warehouse configuration, same parking, same loading dock. What we did do at the request of both the planning commission and some of the adjacent residents was supplement the buffer along the, I'm gonna call it just the southwest and then the northern property line along this portion right here. If you remember the last meeting, due to the topography of the site, we proposed the plannings, the buffer plannings that are required as part of this project up along the edge of the parking lot, just due to topography. Didn't make much sense for them to be down here because there's about 14 feet of grade difference from this property line to the edge of the parking lot. So those plannings serve a more beneficial purpose, being up along the parking to buffer those headlights and any other of the noise which was discussed last time. So those buffer planning stayed the same. What we did is we went back and added a second level of buffering along the southern property line and along this western property line. That allows us to fill in the understory of some of the deciduous trees along the Lutheran community to the south, along this, along this portion here. Some of the, some of the trees were deciduous. We added some deciduous trees. We added some evergreen trees along here, and at the request of some of the residents to the north, even though relatively distant from the site, they asked that we fill in the buffer and the fence line along that northern property line, so it fully screens from view from the, across the dragger property that's going to remain the warehouse as you see it. So what we did is we did this in 2D form. We had our landscape architect go through and and fully plan out that buffer. And then we also went through and addressed the 3D renderings as well. So just gonna flip through these. This is the same overall rendering that we saw last time, but we did supplement the buffers as designed. So I'm just gonna walk through the views one more time. You're really gonna see the benefit as when you get the images five, eight, nine, and 10, which are at the end of this. This is within the Lutheran community, looking towards the back of the warehouse. I'm gonna flip through these pretty quickly. These are the same as last time. You'll start seeing some of the additional buffer plannings proposed along the edge of the deciduous trees along their, their walking trail. You start seeing them through the tree line here. Again, there's still the walking trail. There's the existing berm. There are deciduous trees within there, and then we're supplementing that understory. This is a view from the walking trail. You'll see that these are the existing trees. What's being proposed is the additional trees along the back of it, which are gonna be on Triple Net's property, not on the Lutheran property, but there's gonna be at a lower elevation from the parking lot to allow that immediate screening of view from the walking trail in their community. This is a view looking towards the warehouse. You can see a portion of the warehouse through the trees in the back, but then the supplementing with the landscaping on the bottom. Again, this is a view from the third story, cat at the third story balcony, looking towards the warehouse. And this is really where you see the biggest benefit of what we did since the last time we were in front of you. The existing trees along the parking lots are still the same. Large, mostly evergreen trees to buffer the parking lot at the higher elevation. But everything you see here along the lower portion of the property was added at the request of the planning commission and residents last month. That's a heavy, that's pretty much a double buffer, so you get the lower end and the upper end. But we thankfully, you know, screens are from view, the perspective of what we're trying to do here. This is the view looking from the north from, this is the existing dragger property to remain. This existing fence was proposed at this point here. We did terminate the fence, turned it into our site. At the request of some of the residents to the north, we extended that fence all the way to the western property line and also continued that buffer all the way along that fence line to just, you know, as this will grow in, the fence will serve as an immediate buffer and then the trees, as they continue to grow, will be a full visual screen is what we're proposing to do. You can also see off the page here, but that's, you can see the buffer along the western property as well. So at this point, we're fully screened around all portions of the property, both at the property line and at the limit of improvements at the parking lot and truck court. This is just a view from very far away. The neighboring community looking towards, just to see their view from the existing field. One other thing that came up, and as we start getting into the meeting that we had with the Lutheran community on Friday, which a number of the residents were in attendance for, and we just took it as sort of a presentation as we did with the planning commission and a question and answer session. One of the concerns came up was the location of the walking trail. So if everyone remembers, the walking trail per our meeting with the Park and Rec and Economic Committee was proposed to come along Quarry Road, wrap along the lower portion of our site, come down what I'm calling this peninsula portion and tie into the existing trail network within the Lutheran community. That trail network wraps around the Lutheran community and then also ties into the park and into the to a mid-block crossing in State Road, providing full connectivity. That was the intent, to pretty much bring connectivity from State Road up to Quarry Road and get people off of the intersection here at State and Quarry. This concept was presented to the residents of the Lutheran community. Largely, they were not happy with it. They did not want the trail to connect as we had it shown. So what we're proposing to do tonight, and we already had a conversation with a few staff members about this, is to kill, to eliminate that trail connection through the peninsula that was tying into this lower trail network. So as you can see, I'm kind of squiggly line here, it's getting saying we're getting rid of that proposed trail. And then we're gonna be connecting the trail along the back end of our property, running it on the back end, or I'm gonna call it the inside of the tree row being proposed, and then still tying into the Lutheran community within where we have access to along our property line. But at the very back, so that it doesn't allow or doesn't promote, I should say, residents and people using the trail to be within the community, which they, they want to protect due to the proximity of their house. So this is a proposed that I want to discuss with the planning commission tonight, but I do think that this will achieve a lot of things. It still provides connectivity as you can still get to the intersectional Lutheran. It'd get to the intersection here of State Road in this mid-block crossing. So this does provide the connectivity to the park to Quarry Road, but alleviates this one concern, which was, like I said, a big concern of a lot of the residents in attendance at the meeting the other night. So for the most part, those were the three things that were discussed last month at the meeting. They wanted to see the additional buffering from both the north end of the property and the additional plannings along the southern end of the property. They wanted to see the walking trail on the plan, and again, some of the 3D renderings which are being proposed, or 3D renderings of what's being proposed, looking from the north towards the community, which was that, that was the only view that we didn't show last time of what this looks like. As far as everything else, the layout stays largely the same. We just really supplemented the buffering of the landscaping and relocated the walking trail, or proposing to relocate the walking trail as proposed on this plan. So Ed, I don't know if there's anything more to hit on, but that's just very high level what was discussed last month.
The only thing I'd add for the benefit of the planning commission, last month, one of the neighbors to the, I guess, northeast, Gavin LeBoski participated, and the packet of new information that Justin and I just talked about was shared with Gavin. And I had a conversation with Gavin this afternoon, and he is not going to participate tonight. He did indicate maybe one or more of his neighbors where he and his community might. But Gavin said that I could represent that, one, that we did share all the information with him, two, that he didn't have any further comment or any further requests that would be relevant to tonight's conversation. So that's as far as I can report about interaction with Gavin at least. So and I think what Justin's highlighted is that neighborhood of which Gavin is a part.
Correct.
Right. So I don't have anything further, Dan.
So Justin, on a topic of trees, is there any tree removal for construction?
Limited trees. So as you can see, I brought this plant, it's a good plant to start with. So there's, there's a small portion of trees. This is largely a cultivated field. It's pretty wide open when it comes to vegetation and everything else. There's an existing tree row which basically spans the shared property line between up in Lutheran Community to the south here. We're not proposing to disturb that tree row. That tree row is gonna remain, and we're just supplementing, I'm gonna call it the north side of it on our property with some understory, this evergreen trees to enhance that buffer at the lower end. So a portion of the tree row here, if you want even call that a wooded area, portion of that's gonna be removed just because that's where our drive aisle is coming in and some of the improvements. But what you're looking at right now is pretty much the, the existing vegetation on the site. I will add that there is gonna be a small amount of trees removed from this peninsula area along this section here, just because we need to bring our utilities in the state roads. So there'll be, say, about a 15 to 20 foot swath of trees removed along that western portion, just so we can bring utilities out the state.
Right.
Justin, this is Steve Balla. If we could go back a second, just regarding the buffer plantings, particularly, I guess, the ones along the Lutheran, the new buffers along the Lutheran community. Last month, we did have a little discussion about using the excess topsoil onsite to make some land, small landscape barge to elevate plantings. Is that the intent along that property line with those new buffers?
So Steve, we looked at doing that, and I think the benefit, putting them on a landscape, didn't really do us much, didn't really have much of a benefit to do. I mean, we do have some topsoil where we could create some berms, but the benefit of those trees actually is planting them at the lower elevation, so they're at the understory of the trees because we have the lower end covered from the direct view of the site from the trail looking up. And then you also have the higher elevation covered along the, along the path. I mean, putting some landscape buffers didn't really have much of a benefit. If anything, it made managing stormwater a little bit more of a challenge with how we have it designed. But if that's something that's important and something that comes up tonight, we can certainly look at doing that, but it's, we, we did analyze that, and it felt that planting them at the elevation along the bottom as close to that tree row as possible served the maximum benefit to the community to sell.
Justin, this is Alex Ulmer. Just curious, what do you plan on doing with the excess topsoil then? Being it's not supposed to be removed from the site.
No, and that is, that is a topic of discussion. There will be some topsoil that we are looking to either, you know, obviously with the size of the warehouse, there will be some excess topsoil onsite. We do have some green area along the back where we are able to spread a portion of it. But, you know, we, we will be looking to either truck some offsite or create some additional landscape berms along the property as it, as necessary, but there will be some export necessary if the township is looking for topsoil. We're gonna use the, every bit that we can onsite, but as you can, as you can see, the warehouse is a significant portion of the site, so we can only put back so much topsoil onsite.
I think that was a topic of conversation last time. I think the township did express an interest in possibly using some of it in its park system or other township purposes, and we're amenable to that. I think also there was a comment made at the last meeting that some of the immediately adjacent neighbors would welcome some topsoil if any would be available. So depending on what the interest of the township would be in allowing that, we could accommodate it. But that's a decision for the township to make.
The, I think the ordinance is that the topsoil isn't gonna leave the township. Is that correct, Steve? Is not to leave the township, not, not specifically the site?
We've interpreted it to be leave the township. I'm, I'm not sure that it says that specifically in the ordinance, but we have not, as a policy, the township has not objected if it could be used elsewhere in the township.
That's, that's what I had thought, yeah. So I'm sure we can find places to use it.
We took a more restrictive view. Maybe that's what the ordinance says. I'm not sure, but if it's a little broader interpretation, we'll work with whoever would need some until the point where, you know, we can't export anymore. So whatever you guys like to do, we'll accommodate it.
Right. Any planning commission members have anything so far with the presentation?
This is Andy. I, the only comment that I had so far was that I don't have any objections to the moving the trail. Obviously, if the residents of the community prefer it, there gets to the same spot as far as that's concerned.
Yeah, and I agree with that as well.
Yeah, this is Tim. I agree with that as well.
Thank you.
Alex.
This is John. I actually think the way you have it now is probably a better solution than than the one you have before, particularly considering the previous path would have put you know, people who are non-residents to the community walking through what essentially amounts to the backyards of people's homes, and the way you have it now diverts the traffic away from that. I think it's a, it's a much better solution.
I would assume that was the issue that.
It was the big issue. So a lot of them just had concerns due to the proximity of that trail to their houses. They see it as a private trail, and we just wanted to respect that as much as we could. So if it's, if it's amenable to everybody here, that will be the relocated place for the trail if it works.
Right. Then I presume that trail will be, you'll grant a public access easement to the township along the trail.
Yes.
And it presumes that we get an access easement from the village to make that connection for that little bit of piece that would still remain on village property before it reaches ours. So, yep.
When you had the meeting with the, with the Lutheran community, did they say that was a possible deal killer?
The, the delocation of the trail as we had it shown?
As you have it now, that they wouldn't grant the access to connect in that little piece to the upper left that would connect your proposed revised trail, then go onto their property?
I, I don't believe they did. I see Mr. McKee here. I know he's the CEO of Lutheran Community. I mean, maybe he can weigh in on that, but I did present this as a potential option just in speaking. And I did say that we would need to make a connection at some point so that the trail has connectivity from what was requested, from State Road, from the park to Quarry Road, and I think this, this kind of meets that objective at the, with the least amount of impacts on the Lutheran community.
Mr. McKee, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any comment on this?
Yes, first, I want to thank the developer. Dominic, I know, is on the call from Petrucci, who came out, and also Justin. I think coming out and meeting with our residents really went a long way to allaying their fears with, you know, how this project will impact their homes. Yes, I, I agree that the preferred thing for our residents is the path as shown tonight, and we don't have a problem tying in at the corner of our property up there. The other thing that this, this route of the path does is where it ties into the existing path, kind of along our property and the Telford Borough Park property, it also leads out to a crosswalk at State Road, which we thought was, you know, better overall, that it's tying into that crosswalk as well.
Now, that's, and that was the point too, just to get that connectivity from state. So we, I think this still achieves all the objectives from the Park and Rec and Economic Committee, so we're happy with it as well.
Okay, Mr. McKee, have anything else while you're on?
Yeah, I think that's it. We also discussed, you know, potentially, we're happy for the additional buffering that's happening. I, you know, I think that's great. We talked a little bit about the potential for either fencing or a wall, a wall along that property. I don't really have a handle on, I kind of get what Justin's saying, that these evergreens will be at the lower level and will accomplish the same. And we were kind of basing that on a similar project in Talamance that borders the Dock Woods community. So we did discuss that with the developer.
All right. Well, thank you for your input. All right, so where do you want to go from here?
If you're asking me, Chris, I know where I'm. I didn't think you were asking me, though.
Justin, where would you like to go from here?
He wants to go to the same place I do. Oh, soon as possible.
Understood.
At a minimum, I think we should go over the waivers again. I think there's an updated letter.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree.
And I'm happy just to start going one by one through them if you want. Steve, if that's the way it works best?
Yes.
Okay, so a lot of these are, most of these are the same waivers as discussed last month. I'm gonna start with number one. Number one is from Sado, section 403.2A, and this requires plan, land development plans to be drawn on a scale of 1 equal to 50. Obviously, due to the scale of this project, we're just asking for some leniency on the way that the land development plans are drawn. They'll be drawn at a smaller scale for additional detail. Village is a planned presentation formality.
And we didn't have an issue with this last time, did we?
No, no, I have, they set up the plans satisfactory from my point of view.
Okay. All right. Number two is Sado, section 515.1J5. This requires all plannings to be protected by damage from deer. This is a partial waiver. The majority of our plannings are deer resistant and non-deer resistant plants were selected from the township recommended plant list. So to the extent of waivers necessary, we're asking for a partial waiver.
Are you doing anything to protect the non-deer resistant plants?
I mean, we, we pulled the non-deer resistant plants from the plant list, so I don't know if, if we need to put some additional deer resistant material around those plants or something. It's, that's to be determined, but that's why we're requesting a partial waiver.
Right. Steve, you have input on this one?
I think we might have traded some emails on this, Justin, and I suggested if you're, you know, the outside buffer plantings, the ones closest to Lutheran home and in the back by Landis Market would be the ideal ones to use the deer resistant species on. Otherwise, no, I, we have a plant list. All the materials are from the plant list. We highlight some of the plant lists that are deer resistant in areas that we, you know, more susceptible to deer grazing such as the outside plantings. We prefer you use the deer resistant. Bottom line is, you're gonna replace damaged plantings throughout the construction and the, and the maintenance period.
That's correct. Right. So, and I think, Steve, we're agreeable to that too. We, we had our landscape architect look into that as well, so we can continue to do so, but I think we still require the partial waiver. I think that's, I think how your ordinance works.
As a technicality, yes.
Okay.
Number three, Sado 515.2 requires a minimum of 35% of parking areas to be shaded with trees based upon the anticipated tree crown's maturity. So we're requesting a waiver from this section to prevent 7% shaded, and this is again due to the, the way that the, the way, the nature of the use, just the, the truck court obviously can't have trees planted within the middle of the truck court because trucks need to navigate through the truck court for it to work. We did, at the request of the planning commission, provide an additional 264 plannings along the northwestern and southwestern perimeter of the site. This was requested in lieu of, a fee in lieu of, to actually plant the trees onsite. So we planted almost another 300 trees on the site, and that's just to better obscure the building and better buffer it from the perimeter uses. But still requiring the waiver because we're deficient on shaded area, but the equivalent amount of trees has been planted elsewhere.
And again, you're, you're agreeing to use white roofing material and concrete rather than asphalt?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Could you point out where the concrete is, Justin, just so everyone understands? Could you point out where the concrete is, Justin, just so everyone understands?
Sure. So the concrete will be, you know, we originally were just proposing what is known as a dolly strip along the back of the truck court for where the do trucks can put down uh, their for loading. So we're proposing the entire width of that loading area to be full concrete. Uh, and then there's a dolly strip along the loading stalls. Uh, went into it last time, just that everything that falls within the asphalt paving section will be going routed to an underground basin where it will be cooled. The intent of shade trees is obviously to provide shading and cooling. So for the thermal effects of the water, it's going to be managed with underground detention and the spray irrigation.
And am I correct that there's still a an offer of a fee for the remaining?
Yep. So the the second page of the waiver letter, there's still a balance of trees, which we, you know, we're not planning on on site, and the balance of trees for the afforestation will be the balance of afforestation trees will be um an additional shade trees will be offered as a fee in lieu of.
Right. I think we mentioned that to the planning commission and consultants last month that we would at the right time, sit down with Steve and Greg and finalize those uh fees. So I'm just recreating that offer again this evening, but correct.
The the two hundred and sixty-four uh buffering plantings that you're offering up, they are not going to be uh the afforestation sapling type trees, correct? It's going to be somehow the shading trees.
They they will be. They're the they're the full. They're they're the same trees that your buffer requirements require. So they're they're not the little saplings.
Understood. Thank you.
Sure. It's good distinction to make. Um, number four requires a minimum of twenty percent of the base site area to be forest areas either by retention of existing mature woodlands or afforestation. So this was discussed at at length, I think, last time and even the time before that. We showed you where we could afforest this site if if we if required. We took those trees. It was. It was a requirement of about twelve hundred and some sapling trees, took those trees into an equivalent for additional plantings and took it into a, I'm going to say, not a tree for tree, but a financial equivalent and planted those trees elsewhere on the site. Um, calculation was shared with the township engineer. There's still some excess, which will be offered as a fee in lieu of to the township as well.
So there's no actual afforestation trees. Um, you've converted some of these into uh buffering plantings?
That's correct. Correct.
There's absolutely no no uh sapling afforestation plantings.
It it's it's not what your ordinance intended for the afforestation requirement. So we did it with buffering and if and we're going to offer the rest of the fee in lieu.
Okay. But I know we had this discussion and
Yep.
trying to clarify that. I didn't remember if there was going to be any area of sapling planting.
Not just just additional buffer full-size trees.
Right. Okay.
Number five is a stormwater management ordinance, three oh eight C two and three oh eight C C three. This requires storm pipe to be reinforced concrete pipe, having a millon diameter of eighteen inches. It's a bit of an outdated ordinance requirement. The industry is using HDP pipe now in lieu of reinforced concrete pipe. Um, and we're just requesting that not material substitution.
And this is all on on site, not in right of way or or public.
Not dedicated areas, right.
Correct. Number six, three oh eight C six, requires storm collection facilities to produce a design minimum velocity of three feet per second when flowing full. Uh, highly technical comment. Basically, you know, we're due to shallow rock encounter on the site. Our underground basins are set at a higher elevation to avoid that rock. So we're not able to get that full velocity, but the pipes still work. They still convey the thunderstorm. And calculations have been provided to the township engineer to prove the same.
Justin, what's the minimum slope on those?
Uh, some of them are about a half and a half half a percent. It's not so much of a slope issue as it is a a minimum cover. And then obviously, if we put more slope on the pipe, we'll get more velocity. But um it's we're really limited when it comes to ground clearance above the rock elevation.
So again, I'll defer to Steve on this one.
Yeah, I I think we talked last month between this one, the next one, which is the drop within the inlets, and the last one, which is a free board inside the inlets, were all stormwater technical items. I I believe with my discussions with Justin, they maximized the the design that they could do, and I was satisfied with how they have it set up right now.
Great. Right. So that that covers eight as well?
Seven and eight, yes.
Okay. All right. So these are your waiver requests. Um, any discussion among planning commission members or Steve, do you have any other input?
I don't have anything on the waiver.
Anything with planning commission members?
This is Alex. I have nothing.
Tim, I have nothing.
Andy, none.
John, none.
All right. We'll hold off on voting on that, but it sounds like we're going to recommend granting the waivers. What is next?
I I think it would be beneficial to um at least touch on the traffic improvements again and where you stand with your reviews, just so
Right.
remind everybody of what what's proposed.
Sure. And we have Corey Corey Chase from Dynamic Traffic on tonight, so I think he would be best if he just jump in and uh just give a quick walkthrough of where we stand on all that.
Yeah, certainly. And uh, good evening, everyone. Corey Chase with Dynamic Traffic. Uh, as Justin mentioned, we did get an updated review letter uh from the Township's Traffic Consultant from McMahon. Uh, we did have the opportunity to prepare a formal response back to that. Uh, there were just some minor final comments on the traffic impact study and some minor final comments on the conceptual intersection improvement plan. So we did have the opportunity to submit the revised TIS to McMahon as well as the township. Um, we have also had the opportunity to formally submit the TIS to PennDOT. So it's currently under review. Uh, we're expecting comments back from PennDOT in the next thirty days. Um, the intersection improvements at the State Road intersection with Quarry Road, uh, we previously presented them, but I'd be happy to share my screen just to remind the the commissioners to what we're proposing. Justin, I don't know if you could just stop sharing real quick.
Yeah, it's all I'm looking to do here. Hold on one second. Stop presenting.
Thanks. There you go. So as we previously discussed, uh, as part of the application, we will be providing intersection improvements at the Quarry Road intersection with State Road. Uh, specifically, we're proposing to install a northbound left turn lane on State Road as well as a southbound dedicated right turn lane. Uh, in addition, we're going to do some geometric improvements at the Quarry Road approach to better facilitate truck turning movements both onto and off of Quarry Road. And we're also looking at providing a minor extension of the dedicated left and right turn lanes on the Quarry Road approach to the intersection. So these are all consistent with our previous discussions. Uh, the Township's Traffic Consultant McMahon Associates has had the opportunity to review these as well. Uh, and this plan conforms to their latest recommendations as part of their review letter. And as I mentioned previously, it's been submitted to PennDOT.
Has it just the study's been submitted or the full HOP is submitted at this point?
So the study in the conceptual intersection improvement plan, the intersection improvements haven't been fully designed.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing, Chris, um to complete the PennDOT conversation, I think we indicated last month and again this evening that we are amenable to sitting down with Steve and Greg to talk about a contribution toward the future uh of the traffic signal at that intersection as and when it would be uh permitted by PennDOT, but uh not with this project, it wouldn't be, but uh we indicated a willingness to do that, so.
Okay, thanks.
This is Alex Holmer. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So the is there anything that jumps out on the uh McMahon review? I I see you. You've answered all the questions on the on on your uh whatever you want to call your response to the uh traffic review. Is there anything that jumps out that we need to talk about here?
No, and again, I feel like the uh the the outstanding comments that we responded to on March ninth, uh, they were relatively minor in nature. We just felt to to just close the loop, it would be in our best interest to submit a detailed response so that all the outstanding items were addressed prior to that formal submission to PennDOT.
All right. So what do we have outstanding on this project?
Nothing.
Excuse me, Chris. This this is Andy. Um, Corey, could we go back to that uh to that drawing or the drawing of the intersection? Specifically where Quarry meets State Road. I just want to understand that a little bit better. If we could zoom in right where it kind of tees right there, where Quarry comes out onto onto State.
Is this the location you're referring to?
That that's that's correct. Yeah. So presently, um the, you know, we it's a it's one lane going in each direction and on the Quarry roadside, there's there's a shoulder on going northbound, right where it it tees there, the 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 grass goes right up to the to the white line there, right? You know, underneath where it says relocate, what says in multiple places, but in the center there where it says relocate utility pole, the the grass goes right up to to the to the white line there. And I'm so ma- maybe just to explain it a little bit better to me, what you envision happening to 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 that intersection, um, you know, going forward.
Yes, certainly. So currently, as you mentioned, you have a single lane going northbound and southbound on State Road. So um what we're proposing to do as part of this application is we're going to be providing dedicated turn lanes. So anybody that's traveling northbound, wishing to turn left onto Quarry Road, will now have a dedicated lane to do so. And that the the northbound traffic will not be um slowed down by anybody waiting to turn left at that intersection. They'll be able to keep continuing northbound unimpeded.
And that's the green area, Corey, on the plan. Is that the the dedicated left-hand turn lane going north on State on the Quarry is represented by that green area or?
So the green area is actually what's proposed to be widened as part of this application. So there's actually going to be some physical road widening that will be done to accommodate these additional turn lanes. So the areas in green that you can see, that represents new additional full-depth pavement that will be provided to accommodate these turn lanes. Uh, similarly, going southbound, uh, there is, you know, a wider shoulder as you approach Quarry Road. Uh, likely was constructed as part of some future envisioned right turn lane. But again, what we're doing as part of this application is we're actually doing the widening and providing a dedicated right turn lane in a southbound direction. And similarly, anybody coming from three oh nine, wishing to turn right on the Quarry Road, will now have a dedicated deceleration lane to do so and won't impede any of the traffic traveling southbound.
Mm-hmm. I I see. And and yeah, and and thank you for for that explanation. And I see what's what's happening on the on the southbound side. On on the northbound side, though, as we start from the left going to the right, you know, on that curb section in front of Seacant there. So right now, um, you know, there's a, you know, there the white line kind of splits down the 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 middle there of of the, I guess, the proposed road section and and you have, you know, a basically where you you see the difference in the two tones, you have a white line going there. Presumably, the on the roadside of the white line will be going to the to the turning lane and the, you know, on the what is pretty much, I I I drove it at lunchtime today. The shoulder, you know, along the sidewalk section, if you are going northbound on State, you know, you're going to come up and you're going to hit, you know, um, you know, a grassy area right after the curbs curve section beyond Seacant Medical Driveway there. So is there, but I didn't hear any road widening happening on the the bottom part there on the northbound side. And I'm wondering, there's not enough room there, right? Basically, there's if somebody's making, if you're going north on State and want to make a left on Quarry, you need to wait for them to make their turn. So now I understand there's going to be a a turning lane in there, but is there really enough room to get two lanes, uh, you know, a a turning lane and the ability to still go straight on northbound, northbound on State Road? It it seems very tight to me, and the grass goes right up to the to the white line right there.
Yeah, I'll zoom in a little bit more so hopefully it's a little little clearer to see. So you can actually the the lane line that'll delineate between the northbound left turn lane and then the northbound through lane is actually the existing double yellow. So that existing northbound travel lane on State Road will actually remain unchanged. What we're doing, we're doing, we are doing, you are correct, we are doing all the widening on the on the western side of the road. So the the eastern side, that curb line, the shoulder line and the double yellow would essentially remain in the same location. And then this left turn lane will be pushed to the west and accordingly will be widening to the west as well to accommodate that southbound through lane. So that that northbound through lane as you go
Right.
from south to north on State Road today will remain unchanged or remain in that same travel path. What we'll get the benefit of is having that dedicated turn lane to facilitate those left turns on the Quarry Road. So like you mentioned today, anyone that's stopping currently waiting to turn left, there's no shoulder in the northbound direction. So you have to wait behind that vehicle to make that turn. Uh, this turn lane will eliminate that condition.
There's two driveways coming the way you have your drawing here from from the bottom to the top on either side of Quarry Road. Does your proposed road widening effort cause any additional potential problems for vehicles exiting those driveways that would have to cross now multiple lanes of traffic?
We're not proposing any modifications to those driveways. So, you know, what we're doing again is part of the intersection improvements by adding those lanes. You know, it's in our in my professional opinion, you know, it's going to provide an improvement to the overall traffic flow in the area. So there wouldn't be any detriment, you know, just by the addition of additional pavement. You know, you are correct, there's some additional area that would have to traverse. Uh, but it wouldn't cause a detriment to the operations in these driveways.
Corey, are those, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
I was just going to conclude by saying, I I guess if you had clear striping and markings so that people didn't make a turn going into the the wrong way direction, then that's probably about as much as you can do to try to ensure driver safety, but um, I I that's the only concern I could see going forward is you're you're working diligently to solve one problem, but maybe inadvertently create another one.
And we're certainly going to be working with PennDOT as well as the the township engineer and township traffic engineer, you know, as we further this design, uh, you know, again. Um, but based on what's proposed before you this evening, you know, I I don't see any detriment to the operations of these two existing driveways by proposing the intersection improvements.
And Corey, this is Alex Holmer. It looks like there's enough room in the hashed areas that someone who is turning left could actually pull halfway out, kind of wait there for an opening and then go the other half the way.
That's correct, Mr. Holmer. There is the sufficient width here of somebody, we call it a two-stage left turn movement, if they wanted to to turn left into the hatch area and then make essentially a right turn into the southbound through lane, that could be done.
Okay. Anyone else on the uh traffic? All right. Why don't we move forward?
Chris, there was a hand raised?
There was a hand raised?
How should we raise his hand?
Okay, Hal, you still there?
Yep, still here. Can you hear me this time? Different computer.
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Oh, good. No, uh, I was just double checking that, uh, I was about to say, aren't those two driveways connected? And it turns out, no, they're not by about twenty feet. So Seacant and Emlyn don't connect anymore. I think at one time they might have, but it just it does occur to me that that's going to be a bit of a difficult intersection because you're going to have cars coming in, turning right, trucks coming in, turning right, then going left on Quarry, then going right on Emlyn. But uh, I guess there is no way to really realign that. But I do agree that you're going to have people who are going to be blasting past in the right lane. So maybe some widening and trying to get a shoulder on the right side might be somewhat useful. We already have the sidewalk on the left side of Seacant uh set in, you know, maybe at least just taking it up to Emlyn might be worthwhile while the equipment is there. But otherwise, uh, actually going back, otherwise, everything does look good, the landscaping, uh, thanks for working with the neighbors. And on the issue of digging out the topsoil and the rocks, uh, one thing which uh, one thing which comes quite out of left field, but when you guys have the excavators in there and start getting into the rock, you actually are on what's called the perk, on the, uh, Gratersford member of the Perchium and Shale. So keep your eyes out for dinosaur tracks because there are a bunch of them that they found in this same little section that over at Gratersford outside of the prison when they were building the bridges over there. So if you see something that looks like turkey tracks in the mud, those might actually be dinosaur tracks from the Triassic. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, by the way, Hal Sherman is a supervisor in West Rockville Township for those of you.
And dinosaur expert.
And I'm on other things. I mean, is that a, I mean, is that a site that would require, you know, the archaeological, archaeological, uh, people to come out and look at? That there's dinosaur habitat?
It's, it's a, well, this entire area was kind of like Arizona in the, uh, salt flats and mud flats 370 million years ago, when the Atlantic Ocean was trying to open up. So it, you just happen to come across them and in some cases you find trackways. Apparently somebody found a really big set of tracks up by Cooper'sburg. And unfortunately, a couple of guys came down with diamond tipsaws, cut them out and stole them from the, uh, section, but they're also interesting. You find some fossils up in Penzberg and Green Lane, you find them. And anybody who's been up and down the creek knows you see mud, uh, mud cracks. You'll see raindrops frozen in the red shale. But this is an area, the, uh, Gratersford is two sections of blue shale inside the red shale.
Two and a half minutes are up.
Okay, you're done, Hal. Thank you for, thank you for the tutorial. So if you really want to slow your project down, report that you found dinosaur tracks in your site. Um, but I would encourage you to report if you found dinosaur tracks. Make the record clear. Um, all right, so where are we going from here? Do we have anything else to present?
We do not. We're good.
Chris, I, I just had one or two other things just that we had touched on last time. I wanted to make sure we just have them on the record. One was the site lighting. We had talked about the potential to use a, a light dimming system.
We did.
I looked into that issue at all.
Yep, and we are, we are going to propose that's the next plan submission you see, Steve. We'll, we'll spec that, that similar light package that is motion activated and dims after, uh, after hours until motion activated.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, I did see one of these letters, response letter that, uh, you were proposing to do that. Uh, anything else, Steve?
I think that's all from my notes. I'm just looking through my notes from last month. That's why I wanted to touch on that. I think we covered everything that was, uh, was a note from last month.
Okay, so what, what do we actually have outstanding on this project?
A recommendation of preliminary and final land development plan approval.
Um, you need a PennDOT review yet?
Well, they
Outside agency permits and approvals, as Steve will tell you, right?
They've done their initial work with PennDOT and PennDOT has essentially signed off on the concept plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Corey, but PennDOT has signed off on the concept plan. Uh, our traffic engineer McMahon has essentially signed off on the concept plan. So it's just a matter of the detailed highway occupancy permit plan for that. Similar to them cleaning up the details of the overall, the overall plan.
Right, okay. So is there any discussion among planning commission members on this project before we move forward?
John, I have none.
All right.
I have none.
Okay, so we do have to vote on the waiver requests. Before we do that, I'm going to open, open the floor to, uh, public comment and questions. So if anyone in the audience has a question or comment, please raise your hand or send an email to Greg. Don't, don't, don't just start talking. Let me recognize you before you start talking. Uh, you'll have two and a half minutes. Thank you. Greg, have you received any?
Uh, no, but you have some hands up.
Why am I not seeing this?
I don't know. Well, I see Ted Lester.
Hang on a second. Okay, I, I was down the bar too far. Ted Leister?
Yep.
Would you like to make a comment?
I would. It's Ted Leister. I work for Grace Inspired Ministries, which is the Lutheran community of Telford. Um, I have two questions. Is, the first question is, is there any stormwater management needed along, um, State Road and Quarry Road at that intersection? And then the second question, I'd like to talk a little bit about the sound wall that, um, the residents of the community talked about with the developer when he was out. Um, do we have the possibility of getting a sound wall? Do we have the possibility of seeing a sound study so that we can see how much sound comes from a project like this? Um, and, and when I say sound wall, I know it's not, it's, it's probably not like a sound wall you'd see on like a PennDOT road or something. I think it's probably something different. In fact, the, um, project that was done for, at, near the Dock Woods community in, um, Talmanson, I think various partners did that project, if I remember correctly. And they might be on the call, so they might be able to answer what type of wall was there. Um, and that, that's it for me.
We can answer the second one first, and the answer is, uh, the various people will know that the sound wall they constructed was when the, uh, truck court was closest to the neighbors that were interested in. And our truck court is on the opposite side of the building uh, away from, as far away from the village as possible. So no, we don't believe a sound wall would be in order or necessary in this instance. Uh, and I'll defer to Corey or somebody else about storm drainage at Quarry and State.
Yeah, the existing inlets along State Road and along Quarry Road will all be relocated as part of the intersection improvement. So they'll continue to be located along the, the proposed curb line.
Okay. Do you know where that stormwater goes to? And on the sound wall, could, could we at the community see some sort of sound study so that we can get the residents comfortable with, um, the amount of sound that comes off a project like this?
Ted, one thing, I know we discussed this, you know, a, a couple of your residents brought this up at the meeting the other day. And I did, we did discuss it, but the way that we laid out the site, and I think it was discussed too, the truck court is as far away from the property as possible, and that was done, um, I, pretty much against the topography of the site. The topography of the site really wants the truck court to be closest to your property. So we flipped it and we're excavating into the rock just so we can put that truck court as far away from you guys as possible. Um, the truck court from the property line is about 500 feet away, 400 and about 68 feet away from the property line, which means it's probably another 100 feet away from the closest house. Um, the structure of the warehouse itself, that 35-foot concrete structure is probably the best sound wall that you can anticipate between a truck court and, and the property line. So with the addition of the landscaping that we're posing along the parking lot and at the lower end of the parking lot along your, uh, your trail, we feel that the, the, the sound will be attenuated much better than any sound wall could really do. And I know the various project really had that truck court closest to your property line. That's where the sound wall had a benefit. But you also have to remember too, that the truck court sits about 15, about 14, 15 feet higher than your neighbor and community. So, uh, the benefit to a sound wall is really not necessary, wouldn't be, wouldn't, wouldn't be realized.
I think Justin, my other comment for that would be, it's, right now it's designed as a warehouse. Is there any, would anybody be prevented from putting a factory in a building like this? Or is, is it always a warehouse as a warehouse? It can never be changed to something that does make noise?
But sure, it could be changed. I mean, in whatever permitted use in the district, it could in theory be converted to that. But, uh, that's not the present intention as everybody knows. But yeah, it, it certainly could be in the future if, if the use would be allowed in the zoning district.
Okay, I, I, I think we have one shot at getting a wall would be from the person building it. We would never get it from someone who changes the use.
You are effectively getting a wall built that's way bigger than a sound wall. It's a, it's a warehouse, concrete wall warehouse. That is the most effective sound wall you can imagine.
So to be clear, that there, there won't be any truck traffic coming around the building. It's all going to be on the dragger side of the building.
That's, that's correct, Chris.
Right.
And Chris, I, I would just like to note, I, I think we had similar discussions with, with various, not, not about the sound wall, but about changes in use of the building. And, um, you know, this building and the site is laid out specifically for warehouse use. And I think it's change in use may very well require a revised land development plan. At which time you could reconsider, you know, the actual new use that's being proposed on the property.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Justin, this is Alex Ulmer. Do you guys have any kind of a concept for a floor plan inside the building at this point?
So right now, it's just a speculative warehouse. The floor plan is going to be completely, completely open with the exception of a small office at either end of the property, at either end of the building. Um, as they get into a tenant, as they secure a tenant, obviously the floor plan will be further developed. But right now, as you see it on the plan with the docks on the one side, parking on the other, and then just two small offices at, at either corners is being proposed.
I was just wondering if offices spanned that whole south side, whether that may alleviate some fears of sound being propagated towards the community.
Understood.
All right, um, we're going to move forward here. Linda Scott, see you have your hand raised? Linda, you there?
You have to unmute your mic, Linda.
There you go. I'm unmuted. All right, uh, Justin, first, uh, thanks for changing the layout of the trail.
Linda, Linda, we need your name and address.
I'm sorry. I'm Linda Scott and I live at 2800 State Road, the Meadows Apartment Buildings in Telford. Thank you. And I'd like to thank Ju- uh, Justin for rearranging the trail. That makes, uh, great sense. It, in reference to the trees that you're going to be planting, I know you're talking about the buffering and everything with all the shade trees. And, but six months out of the year, we don't have any leaves on the trees. So I would still like to know the ratio of deciduous trees to evergreens that you're going to plant. What is going to be the height of those trees at the planting? And how long is it going to take those to get to their mature height?
And you're, just, just for clarification, you're asking for the additional buffer that we're planning closest to your property, not the required buffer along the parking? That's just to clarify?
Well, the additional buffer and along the parking lot as well, too.
Okay, so the, the township subdivision and land development ordinance sets standards for what's required within buffer planning. So this, this being, and I know, and I know we discussed it and I, I, we're more than willing to share the, uh, landscape plan with you. It is a mix of evergreen trees and deciduous trees that make up that buffer. The buffer is largely evergreen just due to the, uh, the need and the use of what we're trying to accomplish here. The plantings range from any, from, I think, believe between like six to eight feet at planting height. A lot of the trees are either spruce, arborvitae's, quick growing evergreen trees, which will obviously grow more and more over time. But we are following the SAD requirements for that buffer that we are planning along the, uh, the southern end of that portion, which will, will, will fill in the understory of the existing deciduous trees, which you, which you noted earlier.
Okay. And my other concern is all the additional traffic on State Road and County Line, which are now both roads are a mess. How is that going to be addressed? And we live on one side of Lutheran community. We do a lot of things across the street and we walk across quite often. Will we ever be able to get a turn signal or a, a crossing signal or better recognition that people are trying to cross the street? With all the trucks, it's going to be even worse.
And so you're, sorry to cut you off, Linda, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm, so your, your concern is the mid-block crossing that you have, your existing crosswalk from your, from one side of your community to the other across State Road?
Correct.
So that, I mean, obviously we did a traffic study, we did traffic impact study about the trucks on the road. Um, that would be something I would bring up with maybe Telford Borough or something, but that's a PennDOT road. So any improvements to that signal would be PennDOT dictated. Um, we are not proposing any improvements to that crossing. Uh, all the improvements are at the intersection of State and Quarry at, at this time.
Okay, thank you.
You're muted, Chris.
I'm sorry. Uh, Dan McKee, you have the floor. Now you're muted.
You gotta unmute yourself, Dan.
Dan, you are muted.
Now he's not muted. Now his sound just isn't working. He's not muted.
I'm sorry.
Greg, if you're all right, he's up the hallway from me. I'll go get him in time to walk up to my computer.
All right, in the meantime, I'll, I'll move on to the next person. Um, mister, is it Lenick? Bruce Lenick?
Thank you, sir.
There you are.
I am Bruce Lenick, a resident of 20 Autumn Lee Circle in Telford, a resident of your wonderful township for 13 years and likewise the Lutheran community. My reading of the Township Nuisance Ordinance does not speak to the capacity of high-energy radio frequency signals to destruct the safety network on which I and our community heavily rely. Many warehouse operations depend on those high-energy radio frequency signals to guide robotic transfer of merchandise. Also, those high-energy signals can cause damage to medical devices such as insulin pumps used by some of our residents. Uh, I hereby prayerfully request the planning commission to consider recommending a condition for approval that would include construction with such materials that would guarantee no escape of all such high-energy signals into our community. Thankful for your time.
Thank you. Um, Justin, you have any comment on that?
I do not. We do not have a tenant. I will say that these facilities are constructed out of very thick concrete walls. Um, the speculation obviously is robotics will have radio frequencies which will escape that and, uh, affect nearby communities. We have, uh, no reason to believe that will happen, but that is something we will take into consideration.
Any other comments on it?
That's a way better answer I would have given, boy.
I'm sure of that.
I got, I jumped in before Ed on purpose.
Um, yeah, I, I, I know nothing of it. So I would defer to those who do.
We'll comply with the ordinances. I mean, if they're, whatever ordinances they exist with respect to that. We're not looking to disrupt medical operation of insulin pumps or anything else. So I assume that there are safeguards built into whatever operation it's going to be that would ensure that.
Well, as long as it's insured, we'll consider it, I guess. All right, anything else, Mr. Lenick?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Okay, Mr. McKee, are you mic'd up?
Yes, I apologize for that. Um, yeah, I, just to follow up on Bruce's question, our residents' concern are, they all wear pendants and, and we have transponders all over our campus that triangulate and help us locate a resident if they have any type of medical issue. So his concern is interference with that system.
Sure.
Um, and, and then my, my comment or question was, I'm just following up on Ted's question about the sound study and would the developer and/or township be willing to share that with us?
So I, I mean, I can get into this too. So we, we have done a number of sound studies on warehousing facilities. So we know the, the sound that a truck makes when it's idling. We know the sound the truck makes when it latches onto the building. These are all state AR facilities, the latching, the seals around the doors are all really high-end, really to minimize the noise. Uh, the township has a, what is known as a nuisance ordinance, which sets standards for lighting, noise, everything. I can assure you, due to the proximity of the truck court to the property line and especially to your property line, the tolerances and what we know to be the noise levels from the trucks and the activity that is normal for this sort of use will be well within the tolerances at the property line for what is permitted by the ordinance. Now, I know you take it one step further because you guys live there. And I, I, I can't say it enough that the, the, the positioning and the layout of this And I, I, I can't say it enough that the, the, the positioning and the layout of this facility and how we structured the layout that the truck court is on one side of the building and not two. Only the parking is on one side of the facility. We added some additional buffering. We're not just doing the twenty-five foot buffer. We're doing another fifty off the prop. We're doing another, uh, twenty-five for a total of fifty off the property line. We will be well within the township required or New Orleans limits at the property line. And that is something that we are comfortable committing to.
And I think what we should do at full accouncencies, we'll do the study just to verify what the sound level is at the property line. I mean, we can certainly do that and we'll coordinate that with Greg and Steve. Once we have a tenant, it's occupied and we'll do, after the landscaping is installed, we'll do the noise study.
Excellent. Is that satisfactory, Mr. Uh, what, McKee?
Uh, yes, it'd be great i- if they're doing that, that they would share that with us.
Sure.
This is John. I, I've got a follow-up question to that. So the trucks that you expect to have coming in and out, would they belong to your company or to your tenant or to a third party?
It's with tenant.
Correct.
Right. So are, are you guaranteeing the noise level of equipment that you're not going to own?
Yeah, we, we have to comply with your ordinance. So we will do, whoever the tenant is, we will do the test and verify it because we have to comply as the property owner. We will, we're obligated to comply. And we'll make sure our tenant does too. Yes.
So the compliance is really more on the tenant and their equipment?
Yeah, but we, the property owner are responsible. The township's going to look to the property and they're not to the tenant. And Greg's nodding his head approvingly. Right. He knows where to find us. He might not know where to find the tenant. Right.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
All right. I don't see any other hands raised. Uh, Greg, any email?
No, that is it.
All right. So I guess you guys are looking for prelim, well, you already have preliminary. You're looking for final on us? What do we get? Preliminary?
No.
That was Varus we gave. All right. So you're looking for a preliminary final from us?
Right.
All right. So before we do that, we got to vote on the waiver request.
Right.
Um, any discussion on that from Planning Commission members? If not, can somebody make a motion?
So moved.
You need to mute yourself, please. Uh, can I get a motion?
This is Alex. I'll motion we approve the waivers.
You got a second?
This is Tim. I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of granting approval of the waiver requests, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Posed. Motion carries. Okay. So now you're looking for a preliminary final. Conditional preliminary final. Anyone, uh, want to have discussion on this or make a motion?
This is Alex. I'll make the motion. We approve preliminary final approval conditional.
Okay. Can I get a second?
This is Andy. I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Extentions. Motion carries. There you go.
Thank you very much.
All right. See how things unfold for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Do the same. Thank you. All right. Okay. Next on the agenda is Veris Partners. Somebody from Veris like to take the floor?
Uh, yes, sir. Ryan Hahn with Veris Partners. Um, and I've got Matt Chartran and Adam Zitrulow with Bowler Engineering with me as well. Um, as you mentioned before, you've seen this project at, uh, twenty-nine, twenty-five Climber. Um, some time ago, we did receive preliminary land development approval. Um, that was perfected here in early January. And so this is a submittal, uh, and a request for recommendation for conditional final land development approval. Um, so if I could, I'd like to share my screen. I have a few exhibits to follow up, um, on this meeting.
You can share it.
Okay. Let me know when you can see it.
You're up.
So, um, just in terms of the format here, and I'm happy to, um, go in a different direction, but I'm just going from the win review letter on the final land development submittal. This is the March ninth letter.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I'm just going to go in order there. I think most of these items, because this is a final land development and there was previous discussion on the preliminary. A majority is, I believe, are, are going to be what I'll call more business decisions. So, you know, I'll defer to Bowler as I walk through this, but there were some cleanup items following the preliminary land development approval that I wanted to specifically address as we walk through this. Um, so item, item number one, and, um, pretty apropos here, uh, following the last presentation, but, uh, we had a discussion, as you may recall, we proposed around the entire site. Um, this, you know, not only includes the truck court side of the building, but also along the front parking lot side. This was um, the required buffer elevation of, um, of not only the, um, uh, berm, um, but then rather than a five-foot-high board-on-board fence, we proposed an eight-foot-high, um, high-density sound wall fence. So that's not only on the truck court side of the building, but then also on the auto parking lot of, side of the building and along our driveways coming in. Um, there is a specific concern and I, I just have this landscape plan up just following our last discussion. Um, we basically went through the same iterations on this in terms of plantings. Um, you can see basically every, every area we, we, uh, pushed additional shade trees, um, up and towards the, the Meeting House side of the site. And basically planted everything that we're, um, that we could onsite in addition to the contributions for the off-site plantings. Um, so a specific concern was raised, uh, during this was whether or not the screening along the trailer parking that we've got on the, what I'll call the, the north end of the building or the Climber, um, Avenue side of the building as to whether or not that would fully screen, uh, a tractor trailer, um, being parked there. Um, so we looked at sightline analysis, um, all the way along Climber. So from the intersection at Climber and Meeting House Road, um, and then the three properties, um, that would, that would have a view of this, um, from Climber Avenue. So I submitted our updated commitment letter as part of this. Um, and just cut to the chases that we committed to make that fencing, increase that sound wall fence around the trailer parking area from eight feet to twelve feet. And just want to show you a little bit of background of just the iterations we went through on this. Um, this first one is the easy one. This is from Climber and Meeting House. So this is, um, assisted by the grade elevation. This is the existing eight-foot-high, um, fence that goes along that perimeter and then where, where it makes the turn here is where it comes to the trailer parking area. So we looked at the eight-foot-high fence, uh, ten-foot-high fence, twelve-foot-high fence. Um, really, there wasn't an issue there before, but, um, that gives you an idea with a twelve-foot-high fence. And then this is probably the most, um, the toughest elevation, which is directly across on Climber. This would be um, the illustration with the original eight-foot-high fence. Um, but then we did look at the ten-foot-high and the twelve-foot-high, uh, which fully screens those trailers from Climber. Um, and so we updated our commitment accordingly. Um, as we move further down Climber, um, the last two sections, again, eight-foot, ten-foot, twelve-foot, uh, it's a fully screen that trailer elevation. And then this starts to get assisted as you move towards Quarry Road by the actual grade, um, in addition to that twelve-foot-high fence. Um, so we did update our commitment in this last submittal to put a twelve-foot-high fence surrounding that area in addition to the eight-foot-high fence uh, surrounding the, the other areas of the site that we indicated. Um, one of the questions I heard indirectly was just, we offered several options for that type of material. Um, but just to give you an idea of what we're specifically proposing and illustrating here, this is a a certainty product. It's a low maintenance product. Um, there's a variety of finish selections available on this. Um, the one that's illustrated is a red cedar similar to a board-on-board fence, but this isn't a, this is a solid, you know, a highlight. Again, this is actually designed as a high-density fence, um, to block, uh, direct sound migration, uh, from the site. Um, we're open to other, you know, finish selections here, but just if you want to see specifically what we're proposing. And then, uh, we had to do some follow-up after that commitment letter. So the standard heights on this type of wall are eight feet is the maximum, um, to go to the twelve feet, you know, we'd, we'd also have that commitment, but um, it, it would be engineered by certainty to, it, uh, would involve some bigger post, um, just for that additional reaction of going to the twelve-foot height. But regardless, um, still committing to that fence being a twelve-foot, uh, solid fence is illustrated here. So these were some of the other examples of what, what's possible, but this is the, this is the one that we proposed. Um, so I'll pause there. I don't know if there was any specific questions, but I know that was an open, open discussion point from last year.
I have none.
This is Alex.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, this is Alex Olmer. I guess I'd be interested to hear if the residents on Climber have any input because they're the ones who are going to have to look at it.
Um, we're open. We've, we've, uh, um, spoken to Mr. DeSantis, uh, Mr. Borg and Mr. Willard. I'd be open to, to meeting with any of them on that selection. So we're open to presenting that.
Um, okay. Why don't you go ahead and do that?
Okay. Um, this again is just the retaining wall, uh, we talked about last time, that being a ready rock wall. So, you know, I'm not a, and a designer, but, uh, just the contrast with a ready rock wall, we feel is going to be a, a, a really nice look, um, along that elevation. Um, the next item, number two, this is just a reiteration of the waivers that were granted during preliminary land development approval. Um, I wasn't going to go through these line by line, but, um, I didn't know if there's any questions. I don't want to gloss over anything.
Um.
I think the only items, and basically I was, you know, I listed these because they were approved previously, one or two of them had conditions to them. Uh, one was, uh, curbing, whether any additional curbing was going to be required along, uh, Meeting House Road improvements. Uh, as the trade-off for what curbing was being waived along Climber Avenue. And probably the bigger item was, uh, sidewalk along Climber Avenue. Uh, the Planning Commission did not necessarily talk about this much, but at the Board of Supervisors, there was discussion of whether or not the sidewalk can or should be extended from the end of the Contractor Services site where there is sidewalk along the frontage out to State Road. So right now, they're proposing, uh, extending the sidewalk from Contractor Services to the first entrance of the development. And then, uh, that would be it.
So I, I'll go through just, I guess, Steve, just in order of your letter and I, I'll, I'll get to that, um, point here, but um, number three on the traffic impact study, just some background on this. So our proposal includes, I, I guess the first slide here is the required frontage improvements, um, from the ordinance. So the half of Climber and then the two frontage points on Meeting House Road. Um, what our project actually includes is a full widening of Meeting House Road along the entire length from State Road one fifty-two, um, uh, to Climber. Um, we also did a, a traffic impact study submission to PennDOT. Um, that actually started, uh, last summer and has gone through several iterations. Um, that included a, an, a warrant analysis for a right turn lane, and then it also included a, a traffic signal analysis at that intersection as well. Um, we did trigger the right turn lane warrant analysis. So that is part of this project, um, also. And then we also included, uh, extending the existing water main, um, from that intersection all the way up, you know, not just our connection point, but all the way up to our north driveway and bringing fire protection up that road in the form of hydrants, um, as part of our project. Um, and then in addition to that, um, I guess our, our final step or our next step with PennDOT is really, they've completed the traffic impact review. Our next step is really, they're expecting HOP plans for the right turn lane. So, you know, we're prepared to launch that HOP design, um, following the land development approval here and start that review process. Um, we did have to, um, I guess just one thing, and this is just, there's a, a reference here to the easement. For the radius that we have designed at this corner, there was, it's actually two hundred square feet. A majority of this right turn lane falls within the existing PennDOT right away. But there's actually about a two hundred square foot, um, deed of dedication required on this corner. We actually previously had, uh, an, uh, an agreement or a business deal with the Vogels that we'd worked through. Uh, that property has since been sold, but we're now um, finalizing, uh, a similar business deal with the, uh, um, with the new move-in self-storage that owns that corner. So just in terms of timing here, this is one of the things that comes up, but, um, we feel we've got that resolved, uh, to coincide with the PennDOT submittal. Um, and then Steve, as you mentioned, there was a request at the, um, Board of Supervisors meeting regarding a sidewalk extension. Um, I, I believe, um, Supervisor Collingwood brought this up and the concern and, and certainly valid is that with, uh, you know, if a Wawa moved forward here, retail development is just a draw of pedestrian traffic along this, um, intersection. So, um, we didn't include that as part of our design right now. I guess the first item I'd highlight is just the, we did um, look for existing right-of-way to accomplish that. Um, this is a pretty significant land taking along those property owners at that intersection and um, from where that right-of-way existing, um, stops. Um, but we did propose a, a voluntary contribution of seventy-five thousand dollars towards, you know, not just a future traffic signal improvement towards, uh, improvements to that intersection. And um, frankly, um, you know, we would ask that the, the beneficiary of that sidewalk, the, the person that's drawing the customers, um, be looked to, to install that sidewalk, but certainly open to a, to a financial contribution towards that as well. So I'll, I'll, I'll pause there regarding traffic, but I think that hit all the major points if not mistaken, Steve.
I, I would agree. And just, just to fill that out, um, we also showed, well, there wasn't a formal submission to McMahon because you didn't go on to the next step with PennDOT. We did provide this final plan to McMahon. They didn't do a formal letter, but I had discussion with our representative and they have no, no additional comments, uh, on the traffic improvements proposed. So when you get into final HOP plan, you know, we'll have them look at the HOP also, but at this point, they're satisfied with the layout of the proposed improvements.
Okay. Um, going to item four in your letter, I, I, again, I won't gloss over any of the points, but, um, all of these are, you know, just generally will comply. Um, I talked about the, the sidewalk extension. Um, item B is adding road profile drawings, um, which is agreed and will comply. Um, adding references to the HOP plans when they're developed in our, our land development plans, that's certainly will comply. Uh, item D is Plan B, you should highlight existing edge of shortway and clarify, um, areas of proposed widening. Um, again, will comply. Additional detail regarding the sanitary sewer manhole and storm culvert headwall, there's a, a pretty sticky point as you get towards the Contractor Services site where this road widening occurs. Um, but I understand that um, Adam and Matt with Bowler have been in touch with you, Steve, on that. Um, and in addition, regarding the, uh, the drainage, uh, concern raised, um, and item F. So I, and then I guess the last two items here on that bullet point four, start and stop locations for proposed curb being indicated and traffic control details. I'll acknowledge the last statement. Uh, we agree that the uh, street may not be closed, uh, without approval from the township and access to all businesses and residents must be obtained, uh, acknowledging that statement and will comply. Um, so I'll pause there. Uh, Steve, I don't know if there's anything specific on those items.
Not particularly. I mean, in general, they're all engineering issues. Uh, I did have a discussion with Adam this week on, on some of them. And I don't think there's anything that, uh, they can't work out. So I think the only quote-unquote planning issue would be, uh, you know, what was letter A in that item and, and also mentioned back in the waivers is the the potential for the sidewalk extension. Uh, you, you touched on that already and suggested, uh, your preference for that to be done as a future improvement.
Um, item five, uh, this is, um, uh, dedication of the ultimate right of way along the frontage. I believe, and if we haven't, we certainly will. I believe we have submitted descriptions of those, uh, dedication, but you know, this is certainly will comply as well. Um, a note, uh, added to the plans regarding we, this was touched on in the earlier presentation. Indicating topsoil removal from the site is prohibited without prior approval from the township. You know, I just note that this site with its, you know, previous use of the property. You know, I, I don't anticipate, you know, as much topsoil, but I guess the bottom line is, um, you know, we will comply there as well. Um, item seven is regarding the stormwater management. Um. I won't read each of these. These are all will comply, but item A. Um, I just highlight the note on adding an alarm system regarding our spray irrigation pumps. Um, I know we previously committed to that. If that's not a note on the plan. Um, you know, it will be and will comply. And then I'd also note that in addition to the, you know, the physical alarm for those spray irrigation pumps, if there is a failure. Uh, we did commit to tie those into our building alarm system that's monitored full time. Um, so if that's not a note on the plan, that'll be part of the final spray irrigation design and, and will comply with that, that requirement. Um, item eight, and you know, certainly stop me if I'm, I don't mean to plow through these, but. Um, a lot of these are conditions that we've, we've gone through before.
Sure. Keep plowing.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, number eight, uh, Fee and Lou dedication for recreation land. That's, uh, understood and will comply. Um, we, uh, nine and 10, uh, deal with Telford Borough Authority. So we've. Uh, essentially completed the reviews with Telford Borough and they're prepared to draft those agreements. Um, and then also following our last, uh, meeting, we did submit to PADP for the, uh, sanitary sewer module exemption. Um, so that will comply and those items are, are moving forward as well. Um, NPDS approval, you know, that's certainly a will comply. I mean, well, will be required. Um, and then 12 outbound remon- or monumentation. Um, financial security agreement is item 13, uh, will comply on both of those items. Um, and then number 14, um, if you'd like, I'll go through this four pages of engineering drafting review comments if.
I think we're good.
Guys are up for it. Um, so I guess at the end, I guess, you know, respectfully, we're asking for recommendation for conditional final land development approval. Um, just the history of this project, um, this goes back well before, you know, any of the projects you've seen before you, um, it's, you know, I just highlight and this sounds like pandering, but, um. We've had very good input, you know, not only from plan commission, board of supervisors, uh, residents. Going through this, we've made, um, several, dare I say innovative updates to this plan that, you know, we talked about lighting control systems. How we've updated this buffering. Uh, we actually did a full analysis on the impact of white roof relative to the ordinance. You know, I'm starting to see some of those things migrate into other people's projects, which I, you know, uh. I, I, you know, we did a lot of heavy lifting there, but it's great. I mean, it's better for the township in the end. So. Um, with all due respect, I guess highlighting these up, uh, items, I'd, I'd, uh, request consideration for final, uh, land development approval.
Okay. So we still need to have some discussion on the sidewalk issue, uh. Going from State Road to connecting to the contractors service site. Um. I, I would tend to agree with you, Ryan, that, uh. That the, the onus should probably be on the use that they're trying to connect to. Um, but if you're willing to do. A contribution, uh, for down road improvements, then, uh, I don't have a problem. Pushing that off until the, the next project comes in. I don't know what other planning commission members think on that. That's my cue to get input from other planning commissions.
Okay, I missed that first. Isn't typically the requirement that. You know, the. The applicant is responsible for curbs and sidewalks. Only for their own property.
Yeah.
That's right.
So I think going, going beyond that is. A, a different precedent than we've seen previously.
Well, in, in this case, John, the, the consideration was we're waving sidewalk on Climber Road. Uh, so the, the question was. Could, could it be placed here instead of Climber Road if it made sense to do that?
Has there been a determination of value for the sidewalks on Climber Road? Or Climber Avenue?
We didn't do that exercise yet.
So if.
That's an easy thing to do.
If the $75,000 that they're willing to do for the signal improvement. Could that then be adjusted to also include then the cost of the improvement that we're not requiring on Climber to eventually be. Applied to the extension of the sidewalk from the contractor services. Building to State Road. Basically meaning is 75,000 enough? Like, is that the traffic improvement, like the signal improvement money? And then curbs and sidewalk would be in addition to that?
Yeah, this is Greg Davis. One thing I think it's important to point out. Is that all of these improvements fall in, under the category of off-site improvements. And I know we're talking about sidewalk for sidewalk now, Climber for Meeting House. But they all fall under the category of off-site improvements, which your ordinance is not allowed to require. So the 75K was a contribution, a voluntary contribution. The right turn lane that's warranted couldn't, isn't required necessarily. I mean, Pendot couldn't make us do it because we don't have, take access onto a, a state road. And the township ordinances couldn't require it. And that's in the nature of a $200,000 improvement. Um, the widening of Meeting House. Uh, estimate of cost to, to widen the entire length of Meeting House is probably in the range of 225, 250,000 dollars.
Uh, you're hired, Greg.
Is it higher than that?
Yes.
Yeah. So I mean, when, when you fill that bucket up, it comes to about $500,000. So. Um, you know.
But if your building wasn't being built, we wouldn't need this.
Wouldn't need.
Any of this improvement.
Well, that's not what the, the ordinance doesn't read that way. The ordinance doesn't say we wouldn't need it. The ordinance says this is what is permitted to be. Asked of the developer and a full widening of Meeting House cannot be required under the ordinance. We're willing to do it. We think it's the right thing to do. I'm just trying to make the point that there are lots of things that the ordinance doesn't and can't require that we're offering up as part of this project. And I just like the. Planning Commission and then ultimately the supervisors to consider that. And, and not to mention which, you know, the point that, that someone else made that, that resonates with me is that what's maybe driving the need, if there is eventually a need. For sidewalk on Meeting House is, is, you know, another retailer's. Use across the street, um, you know, not our project per se.
Yeah, I, I guess I just softened Greg's point a little bit there is that on this sidewalk, um, like I said, we've certainly committed to the items that are accommodating our traffic. We believe the foot traffic from this. Sidewalk is going to be for the customers of future retail development south of that intersection. Bigger picture here, um, we've promoted, promoted a voluntary contribution. Um, there are some things that have to be worked through in terms of right of way, and I'm not necessarily sure that's the. That's the best location when all things are considered in terms of. How that impacts, um, properties along that intersection, but really this needs to be looked at in terms of, you know, their build out as well. So that's why we deferred to a, to a contribution.
Any other input? Um, all right, so. You are, you are not willing to. Put in the sidewalks from contractor service to State Road.
But this is, I, I, I've got some more questions about, so who ultimately owns that sidewalk?
Um, it would need to be in the township right of where, uh, the township would have to take a land taking to. Accommodate that sidewalk unless somebody was going to grant an easement through their private property.
But, but who, who is the owner of the sidewalk after you install it?
Correct me if I'm wrong, the township, if it's in the township right of way.
Okay.
I mean, subject to securities, et cetera.
So then the township is only responsible for fixing cracks and maintaining the sidewalk. After it's installed.
Yeah. Depends on what your ordinance says, Steve. I don't know if you know the answer to that, but that's an.
Yeah, that's what I was, I was just gonna say that, that's a bigger question over what, uh, sidewalk maintenance ordinance is that the township has in place at, at the time. Uh. Most townships have. A requirement that even if the sidewalk isn't on your property, you're responsible for, you know, snow removal and maintenance of the, of the sidewalk along the front of your property. Uh, I forget exactly how West Rock Hills is, is, is needed, but.
How about any future potential liability issues?
Nah, I'll pass on that one. That's, that's a question for this lizard.
Uh, this is John. I mean, I think there's a lot of issues there that I think it's cleaner upfront if. If the developer is willing to make a contribution for construction of future sidewalks. That, you know, if the time comes that, and the need is there at that time. Then they're installed. Then rather than. Having the developer put something in now that may never, never get used. Or wear out before it needs to be used. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, my point was not to put the sidewalks in. It was just whether or not the monetary value, the contribution was enough. Since we're waving the sidewalks on Climber Avenue.
Well, the planning commission generally doesn't. Get involved in the actual dollar amount. So I guess if it's your. Inclination, if it's the planning commission's inclination to. Request that there's a contribution to cover that sidewalk cost, that would be enough for your recommendation now and something we would have to discuss with the developer. I'd be comfortable with that.
This is Alex. I'd be comfortable with that as well.
Uh, Greg Davis is going to provide an estimate for that.
I've got that number. Okay.
All right, so. With that kind of out of the way, what's next here? Is there any, any discussion on this plan?
I, I, I don't think so, Chris. I think if you're comfortable with that new truck parking area screening. Um. We've tackled the. Sidewalk questions. Uh, I think everything is pretty much in order from what was required at preliminary plan. Now there's a lot of comments here, but it's cause they tag along until final approval when they'll be, you know, memorialized as the final recommendations.
Right. And we've already voted to recommend the waiver requests.
Yeah, that, that was all taken care of.
In preliminary.
Yeah. So it was just the two caveats that the supervisors had.
All right.
I'm comfortable with the curb limits on Climber, on Meeting House and we've. The sidewalk that we just discussed would have to be in your recommendation tonight.
Okay. Um. All right. So at this point, I'm going to open the floor to, uh, public comment then before we make any decisions. Um. So anyone in the audience care to make comment or question? Greg, do you have anything?
I don't have anything unless somebody wants to speak up.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any hands raised. All right. We're going to move forward then. Uh, is there any final discussion between planning commission members for making a recommendation?
Chris, this is Andy. I, I hate to, to rip this Band-Aid off, but if I look at the November minutes. You know, we, we approved the waiver requests, um. As a minute, uh, minus a determination for the final issue of the parking area shade tree planning to be determined at the time of conditional final plan approval. Which is presumably tonight. So. Um.
But not to cut you off, Andy, but I think the board. Sort of o- overruled that. I think the board made the determination at, at their. Approval.
Okay.
Cause the afforestation was granted. Um. And, and the other, the other tree issues were granted at the time of. By the board of supervisors.
And certainly I will defer. Thank you, Steve.
Thanks for bringing that up. It was a valid point. Um, okay. Any other discussion? If not, I'd look for some type of motion.
This is Andy. I'll make a motion to recommend conditional final approval of the plan.
We have a second.
That's, that, that's subject to the contribution for future sidewalk, correct?
Thank you, Steve. Yes, subject to, uh, future contribution for future sidewalk.
Okay, we have a, a motion. Can we get a second?
This is Alex. I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh. I forget the terminology already. What is the, uh, any abstentions, denials? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
So that's it for you guys tonight. Um, all right. So. I guess both of these plans, we obviously won't see you guys at the supervisors tomorrow night. Um. Will we be seeing, is it possible these guys, uh, both of these plans will be in, uh, next month?
Yeah, I think Greg had already talked to both applicants about the April meeting.
Yeah, that's, this is Greg Davis. That's our intention to be on the supervisor's agenda in April. And, and that's my understanding as well, Steve, that the other applicant will be on same night.
That is correct.
And that'll be an in-person meeting rather than a tele-meeting.
Yes.
It will be in person. Just so you know, try to limit your, um. Um, people who are going to speak. We have limited room, so. Don't bring a lot of. Expert witnesses.
Greg, will we have a dual mode capability by then?
We will not have dual mode capability. It will be in person only.
Okay.
All right. What was that? Our meeting as well?
The planning commission will go back in May. You'll still have one in April. The board of supervisors will be the first one to go back. So you'll have one more, uh, virtual and then you'll go back.
And tomorrow night will be. The last, so this will be, this will be the last, uh. Virtual meeting that I have to report in then.
Correct.
All right.
Tomorrow night will be the last. Virtual board of supervisors meeting.
So no more sweatpants to meetings. COVID casual. All right. Um, so Veris, you guys are done. Congratulations. Have a good night.
Yep. Thanks again.
Okay. So next on the agenda is the old business with the comp plan initiatives. So we've all received the small packet from John. You really are retired, aren't you?
You said retired?
Retired, yes.
Okay, okay. I thought I heard a different word.
I mumble sometimes. Uh, yeah, thanks for putting this all together. Um, so.
It's really impressive. Thank you.
Well, I have to give credit where credit is due. My, uh, it wa- it was a family of that endeavor. And, uh, of course I have to thank my lovely wife for her continued support.
Yeah, well, when you get an award, you'll have to do that as well.
Well, thank her for us, from us as well.
She's actually dialed in tonight.
Um.
Keep me on my toes.
So you want to, you want to run through this or?
Uh, that was going to be my request. I, I know everyone's. The planning commission members and the supervisors have the draft copy. Uh, but there are other folks, hardy. Planning Commission, um. Attendees that are still on, on the call. And at least for their. And at least for their benefit that they haven't seen it before. I'll, I'll try not to spend a whole lot of time, but at least to to share what we have and to gather any additional input or any suggestions that anyone else might have, if that's okay.
Yep, go ahead.
And again, I realize we're coming up on two hours, so I'll try to make, make it quick.
Don't cut yourself short. You did a lot of hard work, so feel free to.
If I can share this. Never done this before. Does that show up?
No, you have to hit the square button with the arrow up and then pick the tab that you want or the window that you want to present.
I thought I did that. How's that?
You got it.
All right. So just by a little bit of an introduction, this is the continued discussion on concern that many residents have expressed and planning commission members as well of what more we could do to better balance development with preservation of natural resources and rural character of the township. And I crafted this on behalf of the planning commission. So my, my first request tonight is that if there's gains approval by the planning commission to be submitted as the recommendations for the planning commission, that's how I would like to submit it. Uh, so I'll be asking for, first for the planning commission members' approval of this after we're done. And of course, if there's any comments, questions, changes along the way, happy to talk about those. And then move forward to the supervisors' meeting tomorrow night. So.
Before you start, so do you want to present tomorrow night?
Well, I was going to ask that question after I got through this.
Okay, go ahead then. Go ahead.
So we'll see how this goes and we'll talk about tomorrow. So the purpose of this document is to present to the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors, what many believe is the need for further action to help protect the township's natural resources. And by way of introduction, environmental sustainability, habitat protection, maintaining scenic beauty and rural character of our community are all concerns that many of our residents have expressed as our township continues to grow. And what we've seen, you know, witnessed again tonight as we approach two hours into our meeting is that economic recessions, high interest rates, pandemics have only slowed the trend towards further growth that we see around us every day. The township's current zoning code cannot stop what many residents value from being permanently damaged through extensive development. And while an asphalt and circle group of trees may qualify as open space, it does little for natural resource protection. And the key here, there is a difference between what the definition of open space is and what we're talking about in terms of natural resource protection, rural character protection, the, the character of the township. Township's present intent is to prioritize open space must be enhanced to strengthen the protection of our priceless natural resources. West Rock Hill Township's current zoning ordinance expresses the desire and the mechanism to protect the township's land through either private donation, public funding, or code requirements for set aside for land subdivisions. The township is also actively working to link parcels of open space to minimize fragmentation as opportunities arise. However, there are currently no open space requirements for our most environmentally sensitive areas. Therefore, progress is limited by the goodwill of the residents to donate their land with the availability of public funds for land purchases by the township. So that's at the township level. At the county level, they develop a document that they titled their natural areas inventory, identifying areas of the county that it sees as being important areas to protect from natural environmental damage, sorry, to protect from environmental damage activity. Coincidentally, much of our township falls within two of the areas identified by the county. The county's document is also intended to be used by local municipalities in establishing their comprehensive plans and zoning ordinances. Protection of the area's natural resources through zoning ordinance can be accomplished in several ways. Lot size restrictions, land use restrictions, open space requirements, or specifically purpose zoning overlay districts. There's a table later in the presentation that shows that our township's largest required minimum lot size is less restrictive than that of many other townships in the northern Bucks County area. However, placing restrictions on lot size for the sole purpose of limiting development may not achieve its desired result through the possibility of legal challenges. We can't just say we want larger lot sizes just because we want larger lot sizes. The addition of specifically focused zoning overlay districts will increase the level of protection for the township's natural resources from increased development that almost exclusively comes at the reduction of the township's rural character. The use of zoning overlay districts can help provide water resource protection, agricultural land protection, wildlife habitat protection, and scenic protection. So there's a lot of information out there and, but I focused on this presentation basically on two data sources. One is the 2019 West Rock Hill Township Comprehensive Plan and also the 2011 Bucks County Natural Areas Inventory Update Document. Got pictures there on the right. So what do the residents say? In the 2019 West Rock Hill Township Comprehensive Plan Resident Survey, in response to the question, why did you choose to live in West Rock Hill Township? The top response was rural lifestyle. Response to the question, what character of the West Rock Hill are most important to protect? The top response was scenic beauty. And as we see on a regular basis, public comment at supervisors' meetings, zoning hearing board meetings, planning commission meetings consistently reiterate the residents' concern for managing growth in order not to lose the rural character of the township. Other information from the resident survey. The, the areas that had the highest percentage rated as either somewhat important or strong to support. Agricultural development, eighty percent. Water resources, seventy-two percent. Growth management, sixty-one percent. Environmental sustainability, fifty-six percent. Community character, fifty-six percent. What was at the low end of the scale? Residential development, fourteen percent. Industrial development, nineteen percent. Commercial development, twenty percent. Even increased school taxes rated higher than development. So I think the heart of the township, you can see where it is. So what does the county say? So that, as I said, the county has produced this document called its Natural Areas Inventory. It was originally produced as far back as I can see in nineteen ninety-nine. It was updated twelve years later in twenty-eleven. One of my next steps will be to see if the township is, I'm sorry, the county has a scheduled update the document again, now that it's been another twelve years. But this was the document that the county put together for what it sees as being important areas to preserve within the county. And as I highlighted here, again, it's intended to be used for allocated open space funds, preparing zoning, preparing zoning subdivision, land development regulations, and comprehensive plans. This tricky little diagram from that county document shows the brownish area is what's called the Upper Unami Creek Conservation Landscape. And the purplish area is the Nakamixin Haycock Conservation Landscape area. As you can see, you kind of have to guess where the township borders are, but most of our township falls within one or two of these areas. I'm not going to go into, um, I'm not going to read this one word for word, but I wanted to at least get into this document. So what is an overlay district? And I got this definition from a website from a organization called planism.com that had a what I thought was the most, um, easy to understand definition of what an overlay district is in terms of how it's applied to install another level of regulation for land development that overlays existing districts. So to quickly divert, you know, we have many zoning districts in the township from rural agriculture to suburban residential to industrial to commercial. All based on geography. What an overlay district does is exactly that. It sits on top of those existing districts for specific purposes like water resource protection or agricultural land protection, independent of the geographic zone. It's more based on, I'd say more based on geology rather than geography in how the ordinance is applied. So the potential overlay districts that we may consider is, again, the two that were defined by the county, the Nakamixin Haycock District and the Upper Unami, I'll never get that word right, Upper Unami Creek District, as well as possibly something specifically designed for woodland areas, farmland, agricultural soil areas, scenic resource overlay districts. Um, as I mentioned last month's meeting, some of my inspiration for this came from, um, Tinnicum Township, Bucks County, down by the river. And as Steve is familiar with, they have a plethora of overlay districts that they've used in their township that, um, I plan on investigating a little bit further and I don't know, we need to go to that extent, but at least initially to consider covering the ones that, um, may help the most in terms of what we want to accomplish in terms of keeping West Rock Hill looking like West Rock Hill. So in terms of conclusion, this picture is the Swerduck Swamp. Developers are not going away and development will not be stopped. However, it is the priority of many of our local residents that had an initiative, an initiative at the county, state, and federal level to continue to work to protect the environmental health and natural beauty of our township for many generations to come. Clean air, clean water, and the overall rural character of our township can effectively exist with thoughtful and careful, careful planning for continued growth in our community. In contrast, once the natural features of our area are gone, they're lost forever. So in terms of next steps, I said, experience has shown that the existing zoning ordinance is insufficient to ensure that our township's character will be recognizable to future generations unless steps are taken now to provide effective environmental sustainability. So with the challenge before us, the West Rock Hill Township Board of Supervisors has requested to get, grant approval of concept for the West Rock Hill Township Planning Commission to continue to investigate natural resource protection measures to be added to existing zoning code, measures intended to maintain the scenic beauty, rural character, healthy environment, natural, eh, healthy vibrant natural environment of our beloved community. So what I mean by that is, you know, no details here about, you know, what's going to happen next, because we don't know what's going to happen next, but what I'd like to get is at least a nod from the township board of supervisors that this concept is something that's worth pursuing going forward. That recognition that we want to do more and that there's a path to get to more. So that, that's kind of like the purpose of this. I'll quickly run through some more slides that I have here with supplemental information. I won't talk too much in detail about them, but just, so they make it into the, the public record of this meeting that, that there is some other information here. Uh, the first one is again from the county document, why it's important to preserve open space. And this is, this is from their, their write-up. And then the next two pages are the description of the areas that are within our township, the Nakamixin Haycock Conservation Landscape, the Upper Unami Creek Conservation Landscape. Uh, this is from our comprehensive plan that shows the population of the township. So in, in year two thousand, we had forty-two hundred and thirty-three residents. By twenty-ten, it jumped up to fifty-two, fifty-six residents. That was an increase of twenty-four percent over that ten-year period. This diagram, I'm sorry, this table shows what I referred to before, the minimum lot sizes of different municipalities within the county. And all of the ones listed here are more restrictive than, than are most restrictive. This is also from the comprehensive plan, the population projections. Um, their estimate, the Delaware County, sorry, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission's estimate by twenty-thirty-five will be up to sixty-three hundred and thirty-seven residents in the township. Couple charts again from the comprehensive plan update from the resident survey, what's important to the residents. The reason I'm skipping through these, if you want to stop and look at it, you can replay the tape and, uh, pause and read things in detail. So now we're really past the two-hour mark. And then the last three are also again from the comprehensive plan on plot by plot within the, within our township, the different uses of, of the properties. Flood plain and wetlands. Sleep, steep slopes and woodlands. So that's my twenty-five page dribble on kind of the state of affairs and where I think, I think that, uh, many of the residents agree that if we don't protect what we've got, we're going to lose it. Questions, comments?
Um, so are you, what are you looking for from the planning commission? Do you, I mean, you want us to, you know, approve you moving forward to the supervisors or, I mean, I, I think we kind of did that already in the last meeting.
Well, I, I, first, first of all, so, you know, I said on the first slide that this is the recommendation from the West Rock Hill Township Planning Commission. If everyone agrees to that, then that's item one accomplished.
Okay.
If, uh, you guys say no way, then, then it's no way. So the first step is, is this, is the planning commission on board with, with this presentation being representative of the position of the planning commission members?
This is Alex. John, as I understand it, basically, we're just saying we want to explore whether we could use these overlays to help limit some of the issues we've seen with excessive number of lots in a small area.
Generally, yes, yes. We're looking, looking for, should we keep going or is this a dead end?
And I would be a hundred percent behind asking that from the supervisors because I agree, there's no point spinning our wheels and you continuing to do the massive amount of effort you're putting forth if there's no, no interest in pursuing this further.
As well as wasting anybody else's time, yes.
Right.
Yeah, I think conceptually, yeah, I'm in agreement with, uh, with this, John. So yeah, you would have my support.
Yeah, and I agree.
This is Andy as well. I, I have no objections with, uh, moving forward in, in this direction.
Okay, thank you.
So then the next question would be, how do you want to present this to the supervisors tomorrow night? And I guess I would add that of Greg as well. What would, what would be the most appropriate way during, during the planning commission report?
Well, I, I, so I timed myself. I was a little bit more than twenty minutes going through it tonight. I can probably speed that up a little bit because I realized I don't know what else is on the supervisor's agenda tonight, but tying up twenty minutes on one topic maybe, maybe too much for a supervisor's meeting, but I'll leave that to Greg.
I think if you hit the main points about, um, what the planning commission's trying to do. um, how you're trying to look at the environmental impacts of of subdivisions and land developments. I think that's what you want to get the direction from the board. I think you could cut it down to five, ten minutes and hit the main points. And I think that's what they really want to hear.
Okay.
And again, that would be during the planning commission report?
Yeah, yeah, the board has this in their packets. So the board had a chance to read it over the weekend. We have two board members on tonight.
Right.
I think you just give it, you cut it down to five minutes, maybe ten at most. Really go over uh the work that you did and then ask them if they're in favor of it.
Okay.
So I'll 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 give my report and on the two applicants tonight and then I will give you the floor to present this during during the planning commission report. Is that feasible?
Yes. Would I be sharing my screen for that?
Yeah, I would, you can pull it back up and you can control the presentation during that portion after after the planning commission report's done and you can do your part. I'm sure Chris would introduce you.
Yeah, I'll introduce you.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
But if you keep it to five or ten minutes.
Okay.
Now you got to practice that.
My work's cut out for me tomorrow.
Yeah.
Just take out every third page or every other page.
Yeah, you guessed, yes.
Just speak faster.
Yeah, I'll work on that part, too.
Um, all right, well, then that's the game plan. So I I mean, obviously, the planning commission members are in favor of you presenting this and and would like to pursue what you're proposing as well. So that being said, let's move forward. Do you have anything else, John?
Well, I was just going to add, are there any comments from any anybody else in terms of? You know, don't be shy. If you think it stinks, tell me.
No, I think it's a giant, uh, great start. Um, you know, you had you had a lot of the great points and uh we can, you know, hone off of that.
There's some hands raised.
There are. Um, scroll down, hang on. Uh, Hal Shermer, you got got some input?
Uh, yes, uh, Hal Shermer, Township Supervisor, uh, something like twenty-five, twenty-three years ago, I was the local guide Sherpa for Dr. Rhodes and the Natural Areas Inventory going through West Rock Hill. So one of the things that I do remember from Dr. Rhodes, from uh intern Zacharias, Dr. Willig, Dr. Smith, when they were all going through. The upper half of the township is the headwaters for the Unami Creek, which then drains to the Perkyomen. It's also the headwaters for Three Mile Run, which drains into Tohicken. And usually it's the headwaters locations that have the best biodiversity, have the best soils, have the most interesting things to be conserved. Lower half of the township has the east branch of the Perkyomen. But we always scored really, really highly on the biodiversity, important natural areas, important locations to be preserved. Uh, probably if I remember from the first draft in ninety-nine as good or equal to Tohicken uh over on the east side of the county. So, yeah, it makes sense. And one of the things that's important is, you know, traditionally you have Euclidean zoning, which plans for what we want to have happen with the township. It's kind of like playing SimCity. Okay, this is where things are going to go. However, you do need the overlay zoning because that addresses the stuff that's already here, like I've got boulders the size of a car, the size of a house. And that's never going to work for a certain uh reasons, you know. And part of that is looking at the overlay zoning is based on looking at the existing condition, conditions and, you know, acknowledging them that, okay, if you want a perfectly flat golf course lawn, do not buy a property on Tower Road or Finland Road or the other locations. You're going to be up in the rocks and the hills. If you want something flat, you have to go to the lower half of the township. But it's sometimes that common sense differentiation, like, yes, this side has rocks and woods and you're not going to have the ability to have this kind of suburban location without really making a lot of land leveling. Other locations, you've got great biodiversity, you've got contiguous woods. Uh, still comes into part of the East Coast Greenway, which is a contiguous contiguous wooded area running from pretty much Lancaster all the way up in through New Jersey into lower New York, important uh biodiversity corridor, and that's it.
Okay, thanks, Hal. Okay, I see Mon Riley has a hand up.
Yes, hi, Monica Riley, uh, nine seventeen Cattle Road. Um, I'd really like to thank John for his technical report he put together and recognized uh recognizing what is that this community really wants. Uh, too much of the rural environment in this township is being destroyed. And I was wondering if you could please publish this report for the residents of West Rock Hill since you're limiting John to five to ten minutes tomorrow. Um, also, uh, much of the same lines, I'd also like to reiterate Christine Shelley's comment from last month. Uh, the township really needs to be more conscious of the trees the developers are seeking waivers from planning. Um, two, I am also opposed to accepting fees in lieu of required trees and plantings. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. You have any emails, Greg? Although we're really not in public comment time.
Somebody, somebody else raised their hand.
Oh, sorry. Tony.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris. I um, I know I'm not in public comment, but I have to tell you, John, you did a fabulous job with this report. Um, and you know, where credit is, credit is deserved. Um, you get a lot of credit and I knew Don DeVal um, was key on um uh getting the mailings out on a lot of the um charts that you did. And uh, I I, you know, if the planning commission and the board of supervisors can get on board, I think the numbers stand for themselves and the charts stand for themselves. Um, and I thank you again, John, for doing that. I I don't know how much time you put in, but for for me to do something like that would take forever. So I thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tony. Okay, moving forward, um. Do you have anything else, John?
Nothing else for tonight.
Okay, well, again, thank you. Monumental work. Um, okay, moving forward to new business. I have no new business. Anyone else?
This is Alex. One thing I'd like to put out there and not necessarily we need to discuss this tonight. But um, it seems like we're hearing from multiple developers that the afforestation and the shade tree requirements of our cell though are not functional. Um, so I think that's something we need to discuss at some future point, kind of the way we did with Pulvisex.
Okay. Um, you know, in the, I've been thinking about this myself, in the um tree shading, shade trees, you know, for the for the warehouse use, it's I it's hard to disagree that, you know, putting tree islands in the in the parking areas of the of the uh truck traffic areas doesn't make any sense. I mean, it's, it makes that, if if that was forced to be put in, it makes that use just about unviable. Um, so I think that's one thing we need to think about as well with this whole uh, all these uh tree discussions we've been having. Um, you know, the effort to make, take other measures to to create the effect that the shade trees uh are proposed to do, I I think that uh bears consideration, uh, which we've we have done. I think it's a, it's a good effort to uh to consider to waiving that that uh problem. You know, the afforestation thing, that's a whole different ballgame with the we probably really need to dig into that and and get the true meaning of it and decide what we want to do with it. I, from what I understand, our our percentages are are higher than than most, but that kind of works in to our advantage in another way. Um, so, yeah, down the road when we're not real busy, we probably should uh start having some more discussion about it. Anyone else?
Uh, Chris, we do have some things on the status memo to hit on.
Okay.
Uh, I made two mistakes. When I I marked Kaziki's plans as requiring action and they don't. Uh, we actually have indefinite extensions for those. And I neglected to mark the two Butter Creek projects. Um, I I noticed it today. I sent an email to Tim Snyder, so I hope to get an extension from him, but I would ask for you to uh recommend a conditional denial if an extension is not received for his two projects.
Okay. You need us to do that now?
Yeah.
All right, does someone like to do that?
I make the motion that the two Butter Creek projects be conditionally denied unless an extension is granted.
Second.
Do we have to grant an extension?
You don't grant an extension, the applicant does.
Okay.
You just accept it. But if he doesn't grant an exemption, you have to act on the plan. That's why we do this.
So can I get a second?
This is Ted. I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Toasted. Motion carries.
And just one last comment on that. I have talked to Tim. He is coming back. He just um, he wants to take the time to revise his new five lot plan based on the comment letter that I did, so knowing Tim, you know, it could be months before we see him, but he'll be back.
So we haven't seen that plan yet, correct?
No, no, I reviewed it. It he pulled himself from the agenda and then I talked to him again and he said, no, I I want to check, I want to revise it before I come into a planning commission meeting, so.
Any updates from select properties?
They'll be on next month's agenda.
What's that?
They'll be on next month's agenda.
Which one?
The planning commission.
I'm sorry, which property?
Uh, the the one north. What is it called, Steve? It's Long Avenue North of the Ridge, the big one.
The original Almont Village project. What are they on for, the rezoning?
No, not the rezoning. That's on the on the board of supervisors, just to announce that we received it.
Just call it Navarro Field.
There you go.
That's what everybody else knows it from, the ultralights.
Yes.
All right, anything else? Seeing or hearing nothing, I will open a floor to public comment. Do we have anything via email, Greg?
Uh, I think so. I will read the public comment from John Romeo, Lonely Road. John's feriduct is the first one I agreed with all night. That other stuff tonight trashes our township. Keep going. That's the only email I got.
All right, so I see no hands raised. So I would look to adjourn the meeting. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
John will make the motion.
Andy, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Toasted. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. See you tomorrow night.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening.